Are we gonna need to turn the volume up a little bit to hear Matt?
Yeah, let me just check.
Hi, guys. This is testing one, two, three.
Thank you.
I'm good. Thanks.
Yes, to Matt. Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome. Thank you.
It's it's on there. It's notice that five, but they're not like items that we just. Matt will go through a PowerPoint. It's kind of more casual council. Just like doing. No action here, but six o'clock, go back to the spots. You ready?
Are you ready?
Bring us meeting this Clear Lake City Council workshop, uh, big council to order at 5:00 P. M. Go please.
Councilmember here. Councilmember Downey here. Councilmember Wilson here. Vice Mayor Slaton here. And Mayor Kramer.
Here.
Ready to jump in?
Me?
What are you ready for meeting?
I am ready for you to jump in.
Alright, so we'll kick off the budget workshop here. Our acting finance director, Matt Pressy, is on Zoom here and he's had an overview of the proposed budget for 2026 fiscal year. So to the extent possible, let him run through kind of overview and then we'll circle off. We can go revisit anything that you may have questions.
And I think for the purpose of this, we'll keep the information. Ask it.
Yeah, that's your problem. So that's. Okay, go ahead, Director Pressy.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Honorable mayor, members of the city council, good evening. I'm Matt Pressy, as the city manager indicated, and there's a number of slides we'll go through to present the budget and the proposed budget. And then, as Alan said, at the end, we'll open it up for questions and comments. So first, I'll start with the strategic plan and the vision of the city of Clear Lake aspires to be a beautiful, clean, safe, friendly, lakefront community where people want to live, start a business, vacation, and retire. And the strategic plan goals are, as far as related to the budget, are what drives how the city allocates and prioritizes their expenses. And the goals are to make Clear Lake a visible cleaner city, make Clear Lake a statistically safer city, support economic development, improve quality of life with improved public facilities, improve the image of Clear Lake, ensure fiscal, a fiscal sustainable city, and to update policies and procedures to current government standards. So these are what have been previously adopted as a strategic goals and are what departments and the city considers when when preparing the budget and formulating the budget. So this evening's budget workshop, we're focused on the, we have slides on these things. And then at the end, as we indicated, we'll open it up to comments. So we'll look at the economic outlook at a state and the city level. We'll do a high level budget overview, a few slides on that. We'll look at all the funds and the categories of revenue and expenses. And then we'll switch gears into department budgets, which I'll present the budgets on these. And at the end, the city manager will discuss some of the the cuts that we're we're looking at. And the department heads will be available if there's any questions. So as far as economic outlook at the state level, there is uncertainty and mainly driven by the national, new national policies, capital investment, the level at the national level and 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 at the state level and the tariffs and the global, obviously global events that are occurring. Inflation concerns, which most likely would lead to driving down the interest rate and consumer price fatigue. We're seeing a little bit of that in our sales tax. So at a state level, there the, there's limited economic growth. We've had very strong growth over the last five years. And and I think California actually became passed up Japan as far as their economic strength at the national or California at the state level. So personal income growth is slightly above inflation, which is is good. On the good side, there are small increases, just a small increase in population, point three percent year over year. So that is at least it's it's not negative, but we're not seeing the growth that we we have. Multi-year budget deficit, the state is projecting and their May revised came out just about a little over a month ago. There's twelve billion deficit in FY twenty-six and thirty billion thereafter. And that twelve billion is also is net of a number of, I guess, a number of areas that they've reduced and already built that in. So the, it's similar with our city. We are seeing overall some challenges in our revenue. I'll switch gears here. So the local economy, the outlook is stable, but not growing. So we're not seeing the growth in sales tax, property tax that we have. And those are the main two revenue sources. We have transinoxity tax, which took a dive during the recession, but has recovered and 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 is is strong, but we'll see that stable off stabilize. So again, property tax and sales tax are the are are two of the three major sources. Property tax is, we're seeing a little increase and sales tax is dipping down slightly and we'll expect to see that and possibly in the out years, come back a little bit stronger and versus stay in a in a in a declining mode. So at least we're we're seeing that, I believe, stabilize. Population growth trends are stable in in the city. We're seeing basically a break even. There was at the county, there was actually a countywide point one percent increase. And in the city, it was just a very slight decrease, but very small. Infrastructure, sorry, the investment is in the infrastructure investment to increase prosperity continues in at the local level. We receive a lot of very healthy grants. And and so that revenue source will be spent over the coming years and it's to be seen whether there'll be some strong additional future grants. So at a very high level, and this is all funds of the city, the total revenue budget is eighty-one point seven million on the left side of the screen. Expenses, the total expenditure budget that we're proposing is almost eighty-four million. And there's a gap, obviously, between the expenses and revenue. The expenses are slightly more, and that's mainly because there are, there is fund balance available in some of the funds that is then carried forward. And we don't need to budget the revenue. We've already received it. So we're using essentially part of the fund balance. And that total is two point four million. And this is a list on the right side of the screen of the funds. Measure V loan fund, about two hundred thousand will be carried forward that we've already received and and Measure V operating fund is there's one hundred ninety-three thousand that will be carried forward, gas tax that we receive one hundred eighty-two and the supplemental law enforcement safety fund for police, about one hundred eighteen. The series B bonds, there's fund balance available there that will be moved forward to cover some of the budgeted expenses and so forth. And and then a sum of all the remaining funds, some minor is about two hundred sixty-five. So this represents a pretty comprehensive list of what we're drawing from from the fund balance. And so revenue getting a little more granular at for citywide, these are the main categories. This broad category of revenues includes transfers. Here we have grants. And then on the right side, we have property and sales tax. You can see it's a major source, some miscellaneous revenue, franchise fees, road maintenance and rehab, and and then about fourteen even smaller groups at a one point three million. On the expense side, we have capital projects, contractual services, and this broad category does include as as includes capital projects, but the capital related expenditures also is categorized. The portion for contractual services related to those projects is included. And the the big one here, personnel, if you stripped out all the capital, personnel would actually be the largest category. And this next slide, I'll jump to, and before I do that, just some smaller categories, debt service, indirect cost, capital equipment, just related to capital or equipment, supplies and materials and services like janitorial and and utilities. So all the utilities like electric and gas and so forth are categorized there. So personnel, this slide is our salary and benefits. It is the largest category for the general fund. When you add up all the other funds, a lot of them are capital. So so breaking this out, this does include all, I think it's seventy-four and a half or seventy-five and a half or seventy-four and a half FTEs, full-time equivalents. So seventy four and a half employees. And the largest of their that expenditure category of personnel is salaries, of course, a five point three million. This would be the retirement portion at one point six, health insurance, so health insurance for the employees. There's overtime, workers' comp related to the employees. There's some special duty pay, vacation, Medicare, and then nine other groups. So you can see the the lion's share is salaries. We're a city that is providing service and and a variety of services to the city. So just pulling back, looking at the general fund, the main operating fund of the city. Our revenues are nine point eight, almost nine point nine, and our expenses are the same. So we have a balanced budget. And this is another slide that breaks out the revenue and expenses. So you'll see property and sales tax at fifty-three point one percent of the of our resources we have available to and this broad category does include transfers, which is most of it, franchise fees, inspection and permits, grants, code enforcement, interest, and nine other groups kind of give you the the lay of the land as far as our revenue sources. Expenses, nine point eight. We have Personnel Services, as I mentioned, is the lion's share of the general fund. And we have contractual services, some indirect costs, supplies, equipment, and so forth, are smaller slivers in the general fund. Next slide is our general fund revenues. This one shows the general fund revenues over a period going back to the twenty-one year, twenty-two, twenty-three. So you can see a dip because of COVID and and then a steady increase over time of the revenues for this year. The biggest category is the is this other that includes transfers and we'll talk about that. There's a bigger increase. And overall, the property and sales tax is kind of about staying even. Property tax is increasing, sales tax is decreasing. So it's about a net no change, which our costs definitely continue to go up. So our our revenue picture is challenged. We do have an increase of transfers to help balance it, but everything else is pretty flat, as you see. And on the expense side, we have just focusing between last year and this year's budget, we in Personnel Services, that has grown. There's, I think, a three percent built into the our memorandum of understanding with our bargaining groups, employee bargaining groups. So there's a natural progression, CalPERS, retirement, that has gone up. And those were the two major categories. Health insurance and workers' comp related to medical costs, those always go up. That's we're experiencing about a thirteen percent increase there. But not as big of a category such as salaries. So this, the large fluctuation relates to this blue area indirect costs, which relates to, on the expenditure side, transfers. And and so this year, that has transfers related to capital. And so the general fund has, in the past, transferred more out than this year. And to help us balance, we've reduced that. The other categories, we, such as contractual services, you can see that has declined and the rest either have declined slightly or or haven't increased. And so now we'll just shift gears. We'll run through the departments. The city council has its own budget and largely related to some of the personnel costs there and training and supplies. It's totals one hundred and eighteen thousand. City manager's office, two hundred forty-nine, largely Personnel Services. There's some minor training, travel, and supplies, and there's a number of FTE in that department that make up that. Finance, also personnel, of course, the largest. And you can see the allocation, there's supplies, contractual service, capital, a little bit for the capital and training and travel there. Administrative services. And and before I move on, let me just make an overarching statement. For this year, given the revenue challenges and net of increases in personnel costs, we have are, we weren't initially balanced and we needed to cut quite a bit from the departments. I think the only two departments were the city council and the city attorney's budget, all of the other budgets, starting with city manager, finance. And I think we're we're on this slide now, administrative services, all the other departments have had reductions in in the other line items. So so administrative services and and again, and we'll talk about some of those reductions at the end. There's a slide that Alan's gonna walk you through. So Administrative Services Department is six hundred and twenty-two, and that includes city clerk, HR, risk management. It includes recreation and events and also facility use and rental. So there's a number of FTE that support that, including our city clerk, Marissa, this department head that manages all these things. So next slide, Recreation Events is also one she manages. This one, we've broken out separate, and this division has events in the community and part of, it's part of the Admin Services Department and and here we have personnel, supplies, training, contract services. And this is a snapshot of of their budget for these recreation and event type venues. Community development, they are support our permit fees and feed, development fees and planning fees are the revenue sources that fund the permit department and largely personnel-driven and smaller other categories of expenses totaling four point eight, four hundred eighty-six thousand. Non-departmental, this is where we have insurance costs that are citywide and not necessarily directly related to one department. Those are, and we have audit costs. So our risk management, self-insurance costs, we do have debt service that's included in here, about seventy-three thousand. And and so I think the biggest is the general liability and general liability costs that we participate in a joint powers insurance agency, and that's their premiums for covering costs related to general liability. Police Department, their portion of the general fund is the largest portion, five point three million, yeah, five point three million. Obviously, we have, the biggest is salaries, personnel cost. And they have material supplies, capital equipment, training and travel, and and then other service and utilities. So the, obviously, in our community, public safety is one of the significant goals and as a service to the community, it is is one of the larger departments providing and and meeting those objectives and goals to keep a safer community. Police Department, the Code Enforcement Division of the Police Department, we have that broken out for you. We do have a general fund portion of two hundred fifty-two thousand and a portion funded by a federal CDBG grant, Community Development Block Grant, related to keeping the city unified and and helping to abate areas that aren't kept up and enforcing our, the code enforcement ordinances. So that portion is, this year is six hundred and twenty-four thousand. And largely, it's staff and and some other costs associated with performing that program, which is also very important to the city. Next is Animal Control, which is, we have a ten-year contract, which is frozen that of providing that service that we outsource. And that is, I think the significant thing is that the contract is frozen over ten years, meaning our costs are not going to go up. They, the contract that was negotiated essentially built that in. And so we're locking in that cost that could grow as much as three percent a year or more if if renegotiated or or ended. So that is a service that has been provided to the city and and continues. And another funding source for the Police Department, as you know, is Measure P. And that portion of the Police Department budget is managed separate in a separate fund is one point, almost one point three million. And that largely goes for officers to help pay for those additional FTE in the city when that was passed. Public Works General Fund, we'll switch to their department. Their department budget is three hundred ninety-one thousand. Both and split between Personal Services, we do some, we have some servicing utilities is a big chunk and contractual service. And then some more smaller other categories of expenditures. And so this is just the general fund portion. And Parks, which is part of Public Works, two hundred and seventeen, almost two hundred and eighty thousand. And so that is a significant budget for maintaining and our parks in the city. City engineer, working on capital projects, both the design and managing those projects. The in-house public works portion is one hundred and thirteen, largely staff related. And Measure V, also used by the Public Works Department, is two point, almost three million of expenses are budgeted and and two point seven million in revenue. And again, the difference is a roll forward of of resources still available in the Measure V operating fund. And a large portion is going to debt service. And another, almost, well, fifty-four percent, and then thirty-four percent is current employees. So the this debt service is funds that were loaned and and then infused into projects. And now we're paying that back. And it was done in a low interest rate environment, so the city's benefiting versus waiting. And and cost inflation has uh uh drives up the price. So there's, we're, we're, I think, coming out ahead where instead of waiting to build it and having it cost more, we built it lower or sooner and we're um the uh the savings from a low interest rate uh outweigh the cost of inflation of waiting. Next is gas tax, also managed by Public Works, one point one million. And uh gas tax helps fund some staff or street maintenance, uh contractual services, and then supplies, capital and some other costs there. And capital projects, these are uh, this is a list of the specific projects. Uh, so the big one here is the Burns Valley Sports Complex that's uh been on deck. We have some number of federal funding sources. Uh, and we've, I believe, spent eight uh million already. I I I may have that off. Um, yeah, I think I do, but we've started that and started spending on the design and and uh we are trying to move that forward. Uh, Addy can speak more to that or the city manager. Arrowhead Burns Valley Road Rehab, that's another big project that's in progress for this next year. Uh, the Dam Road Roundabout, Austin Park Scape Park. Uh, the Police Department Radio Communication Infrastructure and the Airport Road Project. So for this next fiscal year, we have about fifteen point eight million that are, we're planning on um hitting I in this next year. The this slide just summarizes the G A N limit. It's required by the state of California to set a limit on appropriations. And there's a formula and calculation that is um per the regulation. And so that has been calculated. We are essentially uh under the limit. And uh that limit is, let's see, appropriation limit combined. So this is the new limit, eleven point six million. Uh, we take the taxes and based on the formula, we compare it to uh what we calculate as the limit. And the amount subject to that limit is nine point eight versus, so the limit's eleven. So we're well under the limit, which is the requirement calculation. Uh, and so now, uh, final thoughts, I'll turn it over to Alan. He'll address uh this slide and and uh and through conclusion. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I wanted to focus in a little bit. I mean, um, the revenue pressures existed before the other issue was um related to the renovation program. And initially, when we developed the budget, we had the revenue for that program in here because the expenses are in here. At this point, we already moved forward with that, so we had to make some further reductions, which is another five hundred thousand. So I just kind of wanted to go over um some of those actions that were taken um in order to get a budget down, additional half a billion dollars. Well, I guess before I get into that, I should say, um, I mean, Mr. Pressley mentioned that, you know, we're really in a period where we've had slightly shrinking revenues for a couple of years. That's continuing this year. We have to weather this a little bit longer. This isn't what we would consider structurally balanced budget, which means that we are using one-time funding for ongoing operations, which is not a situation that we really want to be in. Um, and we're relying a little bit more heavily on using other funding sources um to support expenses in the general fund that if we were working in a little bit more healthy economy, um, we wouldn't have to be doing it. So um, so back to the five hundred thousand. Um, I implemented at this time a general fund hiring freeze for positions that are not currently in background. So that's impacting a few positions. One, a secretary position um in the front of our office that uh we had the recruitment out for, but at this point we won't be filling. It is not funded in the budget. We have a dispatcher position. Uh, you know, we were uh fully staffed and dispatched for a short period of time. We'd have one vacancy right now, so that one um is frozen. And um, we do unfortunately, right after this happened, we found out a dispatcher that had left a few years ago. Is interested in coming back, so we do have a person moving that position if we're in a situation where we can't on it again. Then the other real shift is because parks positions are funded by the general fund and most of our public works positions are not. We're going to be pulling one of our parks workers um from the parks and moving them into public works and unfunding a public works position to um generate funding to cover that position so that we, we don't have to impact any of our existing staff positions. And then in addition to that, we're some pretty steep reductions across all the general fund budget units. So even with all the increase in um contracts for, you know, software and equipment that um have built-in increases, um our M O U's for employees that have increases. We've had significant increases in our retirement costs, our insurance costs um this year. So in spite of those increases, you still see the reductions over here from all the budgets. Um, so city council and city attorney are flat from last year. All of the other general fund budget units are down from what was approved uh last year. So in order to do that, there's the freezes I talked about, but a lot of decreases um in miscellaneous contract services and other things, including um what seems like a small thing, but just to give you an idea of kind of the steepness of the cuts that we have in this budget right now. There's no contributions for um of membership from the chambers of commerce or any other contributions um that we normally make throughout the year for various um events or organizations. So I guess that's all I have on that one. Matt, maybe you want to finish up the other couple and then we'll jump into all the questions.
Okay, thanks, Alan. Uh, so also some final thoughts, um, the the budget is tight and as Alan just covered, uh, we did significant reductions um beyond the salary increases. And and so it, you know, as far as looking for the the future, a new revenue source to make it sustainably uh structured um and, you know, fis- fiscal sustainability, you know, relies on, you know, future revenue being greater than expenses. And right now, uh, looking to the future, our expenses continue to grow. And there's not uh a a lot of um optimism on on some of the revenue increases. So that's something to make note of. The prioritization of the core services continues, um, ensuring pub, ensuring public safety, road maintenance, and essential municipal operations remain fully funded. I think that is achieved despite some of the reductions. Uh, we're just needing to do um the same uh with less as far as operating on a capital side. I think we are seeing uh good uh um uh growth there. Or or where there's a lot of projects going on in the city, so that's a very healthy thing. Uh, strategic spending reductions, Alan kind of addressed that. Identifying efficiencies across departments and minimizing costs while maintaining quality services. That will continue during the year to see how we can uh do things better and and achieve reductions uh further reductions, uh commitment to key projects. Uh, I touched on that one already. We are completing major project infrastructure improvements and including road rehab and downtown revitalization efforts. Um, maximizing grant funding, that continues. We were trying to continue to leverage available state and federal resources to supplement the city's investment. And the city has been very successful in getting some very big grants, uh, and uh it's really benefiting the city. Uh, we do have the budget online. Uh, it's, the link is here, it's also in the staff report and and made available on the finance department homepage. And it's using the OpenGov app, it's interactive. You can click around and and drill down and see uh to a very granular level uh within each of these broad categories that we highlighted today. So that uh concludes presentation and uh now we can open it up to questions and comments. Thank you.
I have one just comment. It's, I noticed that they said there's no population increase, this, the school districts say differently.
I will address that. Well, I mean, what Mr. Pressley is referring to is the Department of Finance, State Department of Finance projections. Um, and that's what, for example, we talked about the G A N limit. That's what we're required to use in the G A N limit calculation for appropriations. I don't know if you'll recall a few years ago when the when the census update happened, but um I have very little um confidence in the Department of Finance's projections being consistent with the reality, where there was a, I don't know, almost thirty percent swing in what the Department of Finance projected our population. And then when the census came in, it was way higher and they had to adjust. So I'm not sure why that um, how they calculate or why that works. But we know based on the school district specifically that there has been growth. It's not shown in those numbers.
So we have to deal with the G A N limit because of that. And the other thing I noticed in there, there was a million dollars from H and A, it was that left over from the uh lawsuit.
Well, yeah, it is that funds, that um funding, it has previously, you know, in this current year, but just appropriated for projects at the airport and we're having to, you know, reallocate that. Yeah, I mean, we do have our reserve, obviously, we're not touching that, but um.
You might talk about that. One other thing, so are we increasing our incentive viability with personnel?
Um, I I don't know if Matt can um can speak to that off the top of his head. I mean, uh, the, our contribution requirement did go up um somewhat. And of course, um, you know, if the council wants to have a specific overview on how that works, you know, we'd be happy to do that. As you know, there's the, what we call the classic tiers, which are the expensive ones. And there's the two um that are under pension reform, where we basically have zero pension liability. I mean, it ends up being like fifteen grand or something like that and we we pay it off. So we're able to manage that and as new employees come in, they're all under that tier, which makes it much less expensive over time. But um, you know, it's uh, I I I didn't uh personally dive into the numbers on the other two classic tiers. I mean, my guess is the liability has went up somewhat.
But the overall then is stays pretty much the same.
Yeah, well, the uh reserve, um, so we have uh one point six two five million in our general fund reserve. It's kind of at the minimum level that's recommended. I mean, I know when I first came here, I think we had three hundred thousand in our reserve, which was way below what's recommended. So, you know, we, there were a few years there that we have added to, we haven't added um anything to it for for several years now. But we do have that, which is obviously, you know, something that should only be used in entire agencies. I don't know if if the department heads have anything that you want to add. I mean, I know no one's real happy about the exact situation, but you know, our number one goal is right now is prioritizing um maintaining the the staff that we have to do the good work.
One minute, I think everyone right now is affected by the economy and it's only kind of not like, it's only like something like the people can be okay with because they are, it's affecting them too. So like at least maintaining is best than just, you know, laying off or or whatever, you know. But one question I could have was um the new gas tax that's taking in effect on July first. Is is that going to be, is that funds that we're going to receive from that too?
We we will receive a portion of that and um the increase, so we get, uh, well, when we were at the conference in Southern California, Michael Coleman, the guy at the presentation you were at, he's the guy who actually calculates the, those um gas tax revenues for all the cities in California. And um, so we have, you know, it, there's a slight increase. I mean, there's, there's kind of this um pressure going on where we continue to have more and more electric vehicles, which obviously reduces the amount of gas tax revenue. Prices have went up, which which helps that. And then, of course, the tax rate itself has been increasing like it's it's about to do again. Um, and so we are still seeing fairly some increases in the revenue.
So maybe that might help a little bit, this new increase. I mean, I don't think Clear Lake has quite hit the whole electric car era yet, you know, we're still.
Well, yeah, I mean, I've I've long um held the opinion that, I mean, you know, the the first areas to implement that on larger scales are places that are much more wealthy than Clear Lake. There's a lot of our population that can't afford to do that. And so um, it's just, it's going to take a lot longer for there to be um enormous movement in that regard in our population here.
Developers are wanting, still wanting to do the gas stations in Clear Lake.
Well, they're wanting to do it while there's still a window to do so like that, yeah.
Well, not only that, it's good for competition too. I feel like gas prices will try to stay at like a good, you know, price if we have more competition.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm I'm hopeful that um there will be some, you know, real impact from like, for example, the Arco Station that hope will be open soon, you know, all of our gas stations are right here on Lake Shore Drive. So it's difficult to attract traffic that's going on Highway fifty-three through the city. Or even going to Walmart perhaps now and then going back home to the North Shore, Hidden Valley Lake or something like that. Um, and you know, we should um steal some of those transactions from other areas that we're not getting now, so.
When the L M's service station does open, how are we dealing with that impact?
Well, as you know, um, that is um sovereign land of the Indian colony. So they have no um obligation to pay state or federal taxes or local taxes. Um, and they will not be paying state or federal taxes. So any any gas or any other product that's purchased there, there will not be uh state or federal taxes paid on that. But because of our greater relationship with them and their interest in working with the city, uh, they have signed an agreement with us um to pay the amount that um the city would be receiving um if it was not on sovereign land. So really great example of positive partnership. So for example, the the similar project that was just completed in Big Valley, the unincorporated county by um the Big Valley Tribe, um, no taxes are paid for any transaction that happens there.
Or Robson contributor or.
Uh, yeah, I, yeah.
We're lucky there.
Yeah.
They work with us, we work.
And we'll get you points.
Any other questions? Comments?
Okay, well, I mean, I guess, you know, we talked about this a little bit of mid-year, I think it's underlying now. You know, we will be, the council did give us direction to look at um some various additional revenue sources. So obviously this underlined the fact that um, you know, we're gonna have to put significant focus. I mean, I don't think our, just say, I don't think our community can absorb us going to the ballot and like putting, you know, a big additional sales tax measure or something like that. But I think there are some things that can be done responsibly.
Yeah, that was fine.
Okay, oh, we have fifteen minutes.
So we can just take a break until six o'clock.
We'll take a reconveni.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I guess. Yeah, if the council does have any direction related to the rental registration program and be able to get that going in a way that we can you know, realize, get that program going and realize the revenue. Cause again, the expenses to implement that program are already in the budget. We just don't have.
Suggesting that Jessica will meet with whoever from the board of realtors they want us to talk to and have one long session.
Well, I also think that each individual council member, we should also review it and make our own key points that we like. Review and look at and then maybe we can get brought back to Alan and then Alan can kind of refresh it or whatever.
Yeah, if, if three of you can share any of those edits or concerns or questions you have with me and then we will meet with the realtors and.
One suggestion, I already talked to Alan about this with the rental agreement and maybe we can get consensus with the council about it. I wanted to like make the motel hotels a priority. Once this goes into effect, have it kind of be like the first inspections that happen. Because I think that really like is important in our community and in our hotels and hotels are up to par and looking correctly, so.
Yeah, so just so everyone has clarity, the existing ordinance that we proposed does include registration inspection for short-term rentals and hotels. So there wouldn't need to be any changes for that. It's just, if that's the council's priority, I mean, obviously we have some landlords that are constant problems for us. So we will be starting with, with those. But if it's the council direction, we can also start.
Thank you.
And we didn't even have our city attorney tell us to stop talking about this.
I know.
Well, it's not agendaized, so we can also talk about the substance of, of the program. It's okay because it's overall effect on the budget was properly agendaized. So let's, let's avoid taking any kind of actual action.
They're just more like, it's a good idea. It's a good idea, right?
All right, Matt, so we'll be taking a short break till six o'clock and. You can start sharing the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Really hilarious. I felt like he looked.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We can remain standing for our invocation in moment of silence. Pastor Graberson is going to do that. Thank you.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you now with hearts that are saddened by the events that have affected the young people of our community. Yet we also hope, in hope and faith, in a loving Father who heals and restores. We ask your blessing upon the family of Andrew Robert. There are no words that can describe the grief of parents who have lost a child so tragically. However, your understanding is infinite. We ask that you lovingly speak into the pain of Andrew's family and friends and give them the comfort and peace that only you can provide in such a time. Lord, we also lift up Logan Cepeda and Zachary Jones. Please give wisdom and skill and insight to the medical professionals giving them care. We ask that you, with your mighty healing hand, restore these two young men to their families, healing their wounds both physical and emotional. Give strength and peace to the families as they walk through this difficult time with them. Finally, we ask your blessing upon these proceedings tonight. We thank you for all those who are willing to serve our community. Give wisdom to the city council as well as those who serve alongside them. Give protection to the city and the county we love so much. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Graberson. May be seated. Okay, just quickly go over meeting procedures. All items on the agenda will be open for public comments before final action is taken. Citizens wishing to introduce written material into the record at the public meeting on any item are requested to provide a copy of the written material to the administrative services director slash city clerk prior to the meeting date so the material may be distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Speakers must restrict comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within a three-minute time limit. Mayor has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. If you're on a Zoom meeting, please note that only written comments will be taken via Zoom using Q and A chat feature. Please enter your comment into the Q and A chat feature. Okay, our first item business here will be the adoption of the agenda. City manager Flora, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice Mayor Sloaden, second by Councilmember Wilson. All in favor? Well, let's see, we'll do it in the portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, city clerk. All right, our first item then, presentations. Presentation of June's adoptable dogs.
Meet Smiley. He is a pit bull mix. He's almost five years old, but acts like he's a puppy. Smiley adores taking long walks and is always up for a game, a fetch. With his playful spirit, he can turn out any adventure. Smiley thinks he's a model. He strikes a pose anytime there's a camera near. Smiley can sit, sit, lay down, and shake. Smiley's neutered and up to date on vaccines. Come meet Smiley.
Smiley's interested in that.
Smiley was striking a pose.
I have a question. How old is Smiley? Five. He's very cute. Thank you.
I think four years, eight months is what I read on a posting.
Yeah.
Lieutenant Peterson, your report?
Mr. Mayor, council. So, so far this calendar year, there's been 212 dogs that have come into the shelter, 214 have left the shelter, 46 to rescues, 154 returned to owner, 13 adoptions, and one owner euthanization with a 99.12% release rate. Currently in our shelter, there are 61 dogs, which include the 59 adult dogs and two puppies, which is a reduction from the 74 dogs from last month. They've also issued 28 citations so far this year.
All right. You said, how many did you say went to rescues?
Forty-six.
Forty-six. Out of the county or?
They, I don't get. It's mixed, mix of rescues, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Lieutenant.
You're welcome.
Okay, now move to public comment. Public comments, is this the time for any member of the public to address the city council on any matter not on the agenda? That is, within the subject matter, subject matter jurisdiction of the city. The Brown Act with limited exceptions does not allow the council or staff to discuss issues brought forth under public comment. Council cannot take action on non-agenda items. Concerns may be referred to staff or placed on a future agenda. Please note, the comments from the public will also be taken on each agenda item. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the, in the chambers? Seeing no one. City clerk. Swanson, are there any online on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now close, we'll now move to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the council requests otherwise or if staff has requested a change under adoption of the agenda, in which case item will be removed from it for separate consideration. Any item so removed will be taken out following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Does any member of the council wish to discuss the consent agenda items? And does any member of the public wish to speak on the consent agenda item? City clerk Swanson, are there anybody on Zoom that wishes to?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. If there, okay, I'll now then take a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Motion by Councilmember Downey.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Hooton. Vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you. All right, moving right along here. Now move on to business. City manager Flora, please proceed with the staff report.
Okay, so.
On adoption, I guess.
Yep. This is the adoption of City of Clear Lake's budget for fiscal year 2526. The council just completed the budget workshop that we had at 5:00 PM. So unless there's any questions or recommended changes to the budget, just recommend that the council adopt resolution 202526, adopting the 2526 fiscal year budget.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions or comments from the public? In the chamber? Seeing none, are there any questions, comments, or other on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll now close the public hearing. Actually, now we do have to go on to, are there any comments from council for deliberation on the item? Seeing none, now we'll take a motion on this item.
I move that we approve resolution 2025-26, a resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake, adopting the city of Clear Lake fiscal year 202526 budget.
I second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Sloaden and a second by Councilmember Downey. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now move on to item 13, adoption of appropriations limit. That's the GAN limit for fiscal year 2526 and designating the formula to be used for calculation of the same. City manager Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmember. So as discussed in the workshops, proposition four requires that all government agencies adopt an appropriations limit each fiscal year. This is based on a calculation that's overseen by the Department of Finance. The city's proposed budget is nearly $2 million below the maximum appropriations limit. So at this point, it would be appropriate for the council to adopt resolution 2527, approving this year's appropriations limit.
Thank you, city manager. Are there any questions by council or staff, of staff, on this item? Okay, seeing none. Are there, is there anyone in the chambers who wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, are there any comments submitted on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now close the public hearing. Are there any comments from the council for deliberation? Well, I guess I need a motion to close the public hearing. So moved. Motion by Vice Mayor Sloaden and second by Councilmember Downey. Okay, I'll see, do we need that on portal or can we?
You'll have to do a voice vote on that one.
Yeah, let's just do a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, now, are there any comments from council for deliberation on the item? Nope. Now I will take a motion on the item.
I move that we approve resolution 2025-27, a resolution of the city council of the city of Clear Lake, adopting the appropriation limits for fiscal year 202526 and designating the formula to be used for calculations of same.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Councilmember Wilson. Please vote in your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now move on to item 14, adoption of the city of Clear Lake's fee schedule for fiscal year 2526. City manager Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmember. So each year's, along with adoption of the budget, city council adopts the fee schedule for the upcoming fiscal year. There are no recommendations to increase any of our fees this fiscal year. The only thing that's really incorporated and new is related to fire mitigation fees. So last year, the city council approved some amendments to fire mitigation fees that are collected by the city on behalf of the Lake County Fire Protection District. At the time, the council also approved an automatic CPI adjustment to the fees to happen each year. At the time, that CPI adjustment is based on the Engineering News Record Building Cost Index, 20 cities average. And it's supposed to be, it's done each month, but it's based on the month before adoption. And so the calculation has been done on the June to June index from the aforementioned record, and that adjustment was 2.9%. So you'll find it in the fee schedule at the very end of the fees, raises the mitigation fee by a few cents. So unless there's any questions related to this, that's really all I have to report related to the fee schedule. So we would recommend the council adopt resolution 202528.
Are there any questions? Are there any comments from the public? Please come up.
Hi, Margaret Garcia, city of Clear Lake. I was just curious, are you serious about the few cents of raising? I didn't know if you were being serious or, how much is it going to raise the mitigation fee? Like, you're talking two, three cents?
2.9%.
Right, which he said turns out to be a few cents. So I'm curious.
Can you answer that question, city manager?
Yes, I can. I just want to reaffirm the, this is the time for a member of the public to make comments for three minutes and then I can address those. So I don't know if there's any other comments.
Uh-uh, there's no other comment.
That's really common. Okay, so would you like me to address that? So I only have the new fees here in front of me. I can do a quick calculation. There's, there's a few different variables here. Love me. You're going to have to give me a minute to.
Sure, I've got three.
Okay, your, your time to make your comments and questions is complete, so.
Stand quietly.
Okay, so the fees are based on square footage. There's different category for residential construction and non-residential construction. So the current fee for residential is $1.89 a square foot, and for non-residential is 2.36 a square foot. The proposed fees based on the 2.9% increase would be 1.94 a square foot and 2.43 a square foot for commercial. And for the record, I'm always serious.
Thank you, city manager. Are there any other comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close the public. Are there any comments on Zoom?
There are no comments on the Zoom, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we will now close the public hearing. I need a motion and a second to do that.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Downey and a second by Vice Mayor Sloaden. Do it by vice, by voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Now, are there any comments from the council for deliberation on this item? Okay, we'll close that and I'll take a motion.
I move to adopt the city of Clear Lake's fee schedule for resolution 2025-26.
Thank you, Councilmember Downey. And a second?
I'll second that.
A second by Vice Mayor Sloaden. Please vote on your portal.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move on to business. Which first item is consideration of authorization of the city manager to execute a contract for demolition of structures and abatement of properties located at 15893 33rd Avenue, 16721 Cache Creek Lane, 4800 Old Highway 53, 4782 Yarrington Court, 4030 Hayward Avenue, 14042 Woodland Drive, 3228 3rd Street, 3297 3rd Street, 3152 9th Street, 3426 12th Street, 3307 13th Street, 3188 14th Street, 3059 East Lake Drive, and 3223 East Lake Drive, Clear Lake, California, 95422. City manager Flora?
Lieutenant Peterson will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. So purposes item is authorize city manager execute a contract with case excavating an amount of $113,200 for the demolition and abatement of real properties. In January of 2024, code enforcement applied for the CalRecycle grant, as we've discussed in the past, for the demolition and abatement of real properties. Each of the properties had open cases and had failed to reach full compliance and abate the violations. In summer of 2024, we were awarded the grant in the amount of $477,469. On May 1st of this year, order to a bait, appeal hearing was held before the city council for the 15 designated properties for the phase two of the project. One appeal hearing, one appeal was submitted and approved by, by the city council. On May 12th, code enforcement issued a notice inviting bids for demolition and abatement of the real properties. And then on the 28th, contractors attended a mandatory pre-bid meeting. After that, on the 16th of June, four bids were received. And from those four bids, the city clerk, real quick, we conducted a comprehensive bidding process with all of the steps I discussed, and the lowest bid we received was from case excavating in the amount of $130,000. And the selection was based on cost effectiveness, contractor qualifications, and adherence to the project scope. So out of the four bids that we received, as you'll see here, case was the 130,000. Actions Sanitary Incorporated, $170,000, or $170,050. Cal Inc., $280,703, and then Resource Environmental Inc. was $420,000. So after that, my code enforcement supervisor, Lee Lambert, went and reviewed each property to see if there was any changes. He did this on the 18th, and from property 10, located 3426 12th, 12th Street, he discovered it has since been sold, and the current owner is actually abating the nuisance that were on that property and is working on bringing it to full compliance. So breakdown of the bids, each contractor, when bidding on this project, bid a specific amount for each property and then deducting from, after removing the 12th Street property, case excavating was still the lowest bidder at $113,200. This contract's funded through the CalRecycle Legal Disposal Site Grant Program, which awarded the city the $477,469. The remaining grant funds will be allocated for future abatement phases, ensuring continued progress in addressing public safety concerns. Upon city council approval, city manager will execute the contract allowing abatement work to proceed as scheduled. This project represents significant step in Clear Lake, Clear Lake's efforts to improve public safety, eliminate hazardous structures, and enhance residential overall quality of life. So the recommended action is to move to authorize city manager execute a contract with Case Excavating Inc. in the amount of $113,200 for the demolition of structures and abatement of the properties described by the mayor in the beginning of this. Save time for you folks. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Are there questions? Vice Mayor?
Just a quick question. The spread between the low and the high is amazing. It's, is there a particular reason for it?
Sometimes we'll get contractors that bid on contracts like this in larger communities where those amounts may be more applicable compared to our local contractors who are more fiscally mindful of what we have going on here in our community.
Well, before you move on to that, I'd just point out, if you look at this slide, you can see the highest contractor has the exact same price for each property, so they maybe didn't spend a lot of effort on that.
Do these, those, do we have to, do that has to be paid by prevailing way to a union contract or anything like that?
That's part of the process. They have to meet all, all standards.
Great, thank you.
I have one question. Funds that are left over, will that be used for future abatements?
Yeah, so we started with the first phase because we didn't know how far the Yeah, so we started with the first phase because we didn't know how far the money would go. The phase one was $277,000, or excuse me, $229,400. With this round, it's $113,000. The costs that are included in these, when we do the bids and evaluations of the properties, we have to run title reports, those are about $400 per property. And then we also, depending on the property, like our burnt structures, for example, we have to do asbestos and lead testing, so that is a cost. And so for these, this first and second round, just the side, the cost outside of the contractors came to $50,035.69. So after all this, we're roughly going to have around $85,000 for a third round. So we're going to be looking at evaluating some more properties. Once that's done, we'll submit the information to CalRecycle for approval. That, depending on the process, could take a month, could take a couple months. So once they've approved, then we can move forward with the phase three of the project.
Are there any questions? Are there questions? No? Lieutenant Peterson, this case excavating got the first bid as well, and what job they did was satisfactory, good?
Yes, they were very timely. We had one property that had some testing questions on to finish up the first phase, but he was, he kept that on schedule so that as soon as it was approved, he was able to eliminate or abate those nuisances. But he's been very timely in the process, so I have no complaints.
Good. Okay, thank you, Lieutenant Peterson.
You're welcome.
Move on to public comments on this item. Yes, Mrs. Garcia, come on up.
Hi, Margaret Garcia, City of Clear Lake. I'm just curious if, does the city own these properties now? Because doesn't, I guess none of these fees are carried over to the owner, the current owner? How does that work?
Is that your, is that your whole question now?
I believe so.
Okay. Do you want to address that?
So part of the CalRecycle process, it's a requirement by them. So whatever expenses for each property, then the city places a lien on that property. And if the property ever sells or becomes up for tax sale, they are, it's required for that to be paid back to reimburse CalRecycle.
I have another question on that note.
One more. Go ahead.
I don't, I don't get my limitations right now. I maybe forget my question. As far as you're saying, you, if they sell the property, they have to pay the lien. And is the amount of the lien for whatever the total on that property was listed by Case? In other words?
Yes, whatever was the cost for that property, not just Case, but all the, so the expenses for any lead testing.
And if you were to ever get that money back by, say, one owner, however many, where would that money go?
Back to CalRecycle.
CalRecycle. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, are there any other?
If I could just, you know, add a little bit to that, I don't know if it's necessary, but regardless of whether it's a CalRecycle grant or not, if we do an abatement, we still do the liens. The property owner has an opportunity before the lien happens to pay off the amount, which rarely happens. And so then we would ask the council to place the lien, and we would get the money back, assuming, you know, we have what's considered super priority, so we would get our money before, like, a deed of trust or something like that. But there's not a guarantee that if the property sells, that we will always get all of our money.
Thank you, City Manager.
And I should point out, because this wasn't specifically addressed, is the city never owns the property.
You done? Thank you, City Manager. Are there any other comments in the public? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, is there anything on Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, there are no comments on the Zoom.
Thank you. All right, are there any comments from the council before deliberation on this? All right, seeing none, I'll take a vote.
I move that we approve the contract to case excavating in the amount of $113,200 for the demolition of structures and abatements of property located at 15893 38th Avenue, 16721 Cache Creek Lane, 4800 Old Highway 53, 4782 Yarrington Court, 4030 Hayward Avenue, 14042 Woodland Drive, 3228 3rd Street, 3297 3rd Street, 3152 9th Street, 3307 13th Street, 3188 14th Street, 3059 East Lake Drive, and 3223 East Lake Drive, Clear Lake, California.
It's a mouthful, isn't it?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion has been made by counsel, by Vice Mayor Sloton and seconded by, what was it looking, Councilmember Wilson. Let's vote on our portal.
It said something wrong.
Did that?
The vote was accepted.
Yeah, mine was accepted. Well, we know what we're voting on.
Motion, oh.
Go ahead.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. Item 16, is that right? It is right. Item 16, consideration of adoption of a memorandum of understanding with the Clear Lake Municipal Employees Association, CMEA, for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. City Manager Flora?
Administrative Services Director Swanson will present the staff report.
Honorable Mayor and council members, tonight you're being asked to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Clear Lake and the Clear Lake Municipal Employees Association, the MEA, for the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th of 2026, and authorize the city manager to sign. The MEA represents employees in the City Hall Administration Offices and Public Works. The city negotiations team consisting of City Manager Flora and myself met with the MEA and have reached a tentative agreement for an MOU covering the period of July 1st of '25 through June 30th of '26. The current MOU expires at the end of this month. In a cooperative effort to be fiscally conservative, as you heard in the workshop presentation earlier, both parties have agreed to a one-year contract with a review in 2026 to renew the MOU at that time. So you have the redlined MOU in front of you, and highlights of that agreement are, as I said, a one-year agreement, a cost of living adjustment of 3% effective the first day of the pay period commencing on or after July 1st, and an increase of $100 from 300 to 400 for the annual boot allowance for Public Works employees. So tonight, it would be appropriate to move, to approve the MEA MOU and authorize the city manager to sign. And that is my report. I can answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor.
City Manager.
Ms. Swanson didn't mention, but there was one other item that's redlined in there, which is adding Juneteenth as a holiday.
Okay.
Is it going to be for all city employees too?
It's, it's just for the ones in this association.
All right, are there any questions from the council? Right, no? Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, is there anybody on Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, there are no comments on the Zoom.
Thank you. Bring it back to reconsideration. Is there any, have any comments, deliberation? No? Then I will take a motion. From somebody.
Okay. Yeah, I moved it. Go ahead. I moved that we adopt the memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Clear Lake Municipal Employees Association, CMEA, for July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
I second that.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Sloton and seconded by Councilmember Downey. And please vote in your portal. No matter, the item is right.
It's not right.
Item is right. You look under.
Yeah, yours is right.
Yours is right, right here.
Oh, MOU, oh.
Yeah, you're good.
Are we good?
Hold on, I gotta vote.
We're good.
Motion passes with unanimous vote of the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we'll now go to City Manager. We might break a record. City Manager and Councilmember reports. Mr. City Manager, Flora?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's not a record, but it's a record for this year, I think. So I really just have one thing I wanted to report. The additional funding that we had from the Clean California Grant, we've been doing a number of cleanup efforts around the city. One of those things in partnership with CC4C and Clear Lake Waste Solutions, there's going to be two free dump days at Red Bud Park tomorrow and Saturday. So hopefully, you can encourage members of the community to take advantage of that. That's my report.
Thank you, City Manager. Moving on, Councilmember Hooton, starting near far left.
I've got nothing to report.
Nothing to report, okay. Councilmember Wilson?
I attended the ribbon cutting of the designation of the Stein and Wine as our latest Blue Zone restaurant.
Thank you. Councilmember Downey?
I have nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Sloton?
I attended the APC meeting. I was trying to figure out if there was anything very interesting, and I don't remember it. So must not, must not have been. I just want to also announce tomorrow, Saturday is the first concert in the park. And Rotary will be providing the beer for that. That's it.
That's it, thank you. And I attended the same meeting as Vice Mayor Sloton for APC. And you're right, there wasn't anything of a great note. I also attended an RRA meeting this past Monday, just a standard meeting, and we, again, didn't have anything to report out on that. Still working forward on a number of grants, but they're still in the works. So that's, that's all the reports. Future agenda items?
I have one. I have one. I was approached by a citizen about the fact that we have private streets in the city and that you don't know that they're private streets when you're buying the property. So I'd like us to consider adding disclosures to, about private streets to citizens when they buy a property.
Have any comment on that?
Yeah, I did talk to Councilmember Wilson about this. I think that's something we looked into a little bit a few years back, and I think it is possible we have to, you know, coordinate a little bit on the process and what that looks like. But if the council's interested in that, we'd be happy to facilitate that discussion.
Okay, any comments from council on that particular?
I do believe that when you purchase a home, you do, we do have our clients sign Lake County disclosure as well as statewide, and I do believe that there is an area in there, nobody reads them because they're long, but along with everything else, I believe there is an area in there that talks about public versus private roads.
Okay.
Chances are some, it was put in front of their face.
I think the city engineer has a map that's so specific, which speaks to private and public.
We do. It was adopted by the City Council a few years back. We did a whole analysis on it, and it's on our website. But again, there is a lot of confusion. Transactions do happen where people don't realize. I mean, it's a bit unusual that there's the volume of private streets that are not controlled by homeowners association in Clear Lake. So again, obviously, we can't have a big discussion about it now, but if there's interest in talking about it more and seeing, you know, we can look more at what Councilmember Hooton was mentioning as far as what is in there and if there's options to have a more robust disclosure.
Okay, is everyone consensus on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's, that's always a question.
Yes. Okay, please do add that to a future agenda item. Are there any other future agenda items?
Not yet.
Nope.
Working on it.
All right. What? We did need a voice vote.
For what?
Future agenda items. So all in favor of the future agenda item?
Aye.
Okay, so thank you, everyone who took the time to submit their comments, but there were none, so I don't have to thank them for that. We will now adjourn the meeting at 6:42.